... And you have it, Lewis? It should go up.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to put this stopped up over here and turn it around so that it's back camera.
The purpose of this meeting is to examine some personnel matters and some other matters with respect to capital projects to take for CIP and for the IT fund. So we will first start with the main public comments.
Sorry, I just know where you're writing.
And then the edits. Just the main public comments. Please identify the agenda item. You can call it in the color. Okay, thank you. We'll move right in then to personnel number four. And there is an adjustment on this personnel item. The names two, three, and four are being put forth at this time. Individual name number one on the agenda. There's still some additional work and paperwork to ask to be done. So the board, the recommendation will be for Gregory Dean, Stephen Shelley, and Stephen Zilimiski. Sorry if I mispronounced that. Okay?
So who?
Okay. All right. Is there any conversation or questions by the board? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Reposed. Thank you, the motion carries. We'll move on to number five, other business. And we're moving, the recommendation is to approve the settlement agreement number 1386009482 as presented. So who?
Second.
I know everybody got a copy of that in advance. All in favor?
Aye.
Reposed. Thank you, the motion carries. Item 5B, motion to approve 2018-19 budget as presented for the career institute technology.
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Okay. Well, we certainly heard that budget presentation from them. So I'll ask for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Reposed. Thank you, the motion carries. 5C, move to approve the 2018-19 budget as presented for the colonial intermediate unit 20.
So who?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Reposed. Motion carries. At this time, I'll ask if there are any interested citizens that wish to make comment to the board on non-agenda items. You would come forth. Okay. Thank you. This time I'll look for a motion to adjourn. So who?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Reposed, anybody? All right, thank you. This, the business portion of this special meeting is now over, and we will convene with our agenda for the public work session for capital projects. And Mr. Fainal?
Thank you. Josh, we're beginning with the Cheston Elementary School bids.
Okay. Not yet, Bob. We'll hit that in a few agenda items. I kind of shuffled the order from what was listed on the sheet here, just to get a pair of quicker discussion items, get those out of the way first. So we will hit Cheston, but not.
Okay.
Okay. So what the order is, I want to review some other capital project bid results. These are more of the summer project type items for 2018. That would be the high school HVAC control system replacement and also the middle school exterior ramp repair. Those are summer 2018 projects. High school is actually going to be split into two summers based on the scope of work. We're going to tackle a portion of it this summer, a portion of it next summer. We also have two other bids that will be received this week. Yeah, one of them will be tomorrow, which is the high school data network upgrades, and the other one is the high school sanitary pipe replacement. Last meeting, Mr. Case gave you an update with some of the difficulties of the sanitary line exiting from around tennis courts and then crossing over to 25th Street. So we prepared a replacement plan, which would install a new pipe heading out to the township's main along Route 22. Okay, so that was put out as an emergency project. We had a pre-construction meeting on Monday, and we'll get bids back for that project on Friday so that we can get that on the agenda next week as well. After that, we're going to hit the Cheston bid results, and then move on to the stadium discussion as a follow-up from the last meeting. We had a couple edits that we made and some minor updates to talk about. So for the high school HVAC control system, we had four bidders for that project. There were two alternate bids. One of them had to do with the type of system that would be installed. Under the base bid is a Siemens control system. There was an alternate bid for Johnson controls. You can see that the Johnson alternate was quite a bit higher. I cannot really explain the tremendous amount. I guess they maybe just weren't interested in servicing the district for this building. But nevertheless, we are not going to recommend accepting the Johnson controls alternate. Second alternate was to include some miscellaneous equipment in the older sections of the building that we do recommend doing so that everything building-wide is tied into a new control system. So with the bid results and the recommended alternate, the contractor would be Myco Mechanical for $1,812,000. So that number coupled with the chiller replacement, which was a separate bid, both those numbers combined came in under the allotted amount of three and a half million. So we had kind of grouped that budget together initially. Those projects ended up getting split apart, but the sum total of the two is still under the capital plan budget. Next is the middle school ramp repair. We had pretty good turnout at the pre-bid meeting. The nature of the work is pretty specialized. It has a lot to do with repair of roofing materials, of steel, and of masonry and concrete. So again, a good turnout, but not a whole lot of bids received, unfortunately. The ones we did get were from two reputable contractors in the area, Walter Brucker, they actually did the March renovation a number of years ago, and also Andre Hewitt. Walter Brucker would be the low bidder for this project at $291,000. Any questions on those two? Okay, so again, the remaining bids to be received this week, the sanitary repair, which I mentioned, we're going to reroute the sanitary line towards Route 22 and tie it into the former township name. We'll get those bids back on Friday. And the data network upgrades, similar to the control system, just based on the scope of the project. We also split that up into a two-year project. We had three contractors come to the pre-bid meeting. It's a little bit different project in that electrical contractors will be the prime bidder, but it's mostly data network, obviously. So it's not really in the wheelhouse of a lot of electrical contractors. So there's going to be limited competition on that. We did get three very reputable companies come in and look at it, so hopefully that translates to good bids, but it is somewhat of a specialized project. We were able to work with Sue STEM and identify what is absolutely necessary from a phase one, from a summer one, and a summer two. So what's interesting to note is we did include an alternate bid to tackle the project under one summer. Two of the companies seemed to think that it was just going to be too much for them to handle under one summer. We wanted to keep their interest in bidding, so we were able to split it into two summers. One of the companies actually thinks you might save money that they can tackle it all in one summer. So we prepared that as an alternate bid. So we'll be able to come back with a recommendation after we receive those bids tomorrow. Josh, do you have the details of what breakdowns were for the upgrades?
Yeah.
In general, it has a lot to do with fiber infrastructure replacements from the main distribution closet branching out to about a dozen or so intermediate closets throughout the building, which then serves new access points, new phones, and various data drops in the classrooms. A lot of it has to do with what you don't see above the ceiling as far as the cabling infrastructure in between the closets.
So are you saying they're putting new phones in all classrooms then?
Yes. I don't have a complete count. That's going to be purchased by the IT department.
So those things are not included in that bid?
Correct. This is basically for the cabling infrastructure, the racks, those types of things. The access points themselves will be furnished by the district. The cabling to them will be part of this contract.
But you do have the breakdown summary for what they were bidding on, right?
Yeah, we prepared full bid documents as far as what the scope of work is. In addition to that, you know, Sue has her own listing of components that will be purchased by the district, the access points, the phones, those types.
I don't know who else may be interested. I'd like to see all that.
Sure. Now we can jump to the Cheston discussion. We'll take you through the bids and the alternates for this project. So the good news is, we came in under the latest budget that we had prepared for the project. Very close numbers, very competitive. We had a very good turnout from contractors for every discipline that was bid. So again, this, in Pennsylvania, you have to have a multiple-prime contract project. We will have five for Cheston, a general mechanical plumbing, electrical, and fire electrical. So you can see that the actual bid numbers in comparison to the budget, we are under and we're pretty close to what was initially projected. So these are base bid numbers. We'll go through the alternates now. Last meeting or a couple meetings ago, we went through what alternates are. They're adjustments to that base bid proposal. They're adds or deducts. They allow flexibility. So in this case, seeing as how the project bid came in under budget, we're able to be selective in which alternates we'd like to take. A lot of the alternates you'll see were deduct alternates, and we did that so that there would be some cost control on bid day. Obviously, we couldn't cut programmatic type things. So you'll see that a lot of the alternates had to do with finishes in the building, floor finishes, casework, countertops, those types of things. Okay? All right. The GC, the general contractor, had a whole host of alternates. We will go through each one because on Tuesday night, part of the motion for the approval of the bids will be for which alternates are to be selected as well. So obviously, that affects the contract. So we'll run through the alternates here quickly, and we can tell you which ones have been selected, at least from the design team and the administration standpoint, if we can open it up to any conversation that you'd like to have as we discuss these alternates. Alternate one, what is a roofing system type alternate? This one goes both ways. We had one to increase the warranty length. So the base bid roofing system is a built-up asphalt roof, which is similar to the picture you see on the left. It's a redundant system. It has multiple plies and asphalt adhesion keeping those plies together. It's a very robust and redundant system. So the base bid warranty was a 20-year roof. There's an increase of $75,000 to jump from a 20 to a 30-year warranty. Conversely, on the right side is an EPDM system, which is a single-ply rubber system. Instead of having multiple layers of roofing, there's only one. So it was meant to be a cost savings alternate. We don't recommend stepping down from the base bid system. In fact, we actually recommend for a $75,000 premium to jump to the 30-year warranty for the roofing system. There is a little bit more maintenance and ongoing costs as part of an EPDM system that we just don't recommend going to long-term.
Josh, will they be applying the type of roof stone over that rubber?
Not over the rubber, over the asphalt.
Over the asphalt, yes.
Okay. Okay. I'll kind of buzz through the next couple. We've looked at these before. They have to do with, again, floor finishes. Under the base bid, the floor finishes in the cafeteria, the corridors is terrazzo, epoxy terrazzo, very durable material. It's, you know, it'll last forever, so to speak. Again, as part of a cost savings measure, an alternate was to change the cafeteria flooring from terrazzo to a sheet vinyl material. In that case, there would be a savings of $30,000. The corridors, we had two alternates related to the corridor floors. One would be for the three-story classroom section, and the other one would finish out the corridors all the way up to the front entrance. Respectively, there would be a credit of $180,000 for the classrooms and $122,000 for the remainder of the building, second floor, from the main stair tower up to the front entrance. The alternate floor in the corridors would be vinyl tile, so the 12-by-12 classroom-style tile. Not nearly as durable as the terrazzo, and there's also more maintenance as it relates to waxing and nearly clean of that. Okay, so we do not recommend accepting those alternates for the floor tile. Alternates four and 4A have to do with countertop material and windowsill material. In the base bid for the countertops along the classroom side and also the windowsills, obviously on the exterior wall, base bid material is a solid surface, acorian-type material, and the alternate material is plastic laminate. So it's, you know, the material that you might have in your home, your kitchen counter, it can peel, it can chip. If water gets on it, which is likely with little hands washing their hands at the sinks, you know, it can delaminate and damage. Therefore, we would recommend, again, sticking with the base bid of the solid surface materials for those. The countertop credit would be $118,000, and the windowsills would be a credit of $15,000 to substitute plastic laminate. The next alternate, I will let Joe maybe walk around with the brick types for you. Joe, if you want to take a walk through.
Joe and Joe.
Joe does all the heavy lifting around here.
Let me just put them in a binder.
So on Joe's left is the base bid brick, which you'll see there are some accent colors and features that are essentially baked in through the thickness of the brick. And there's actually an iron pigment that's baked in with that brick. The alternate brick on the right has most of the features applied with a brush after the brick is fired. So it's not quite the same look, not quite the same composition with that brick. So the base bid brick, I'm sorry again, is on the left. There would be a credit to go with the alternate brick, and that would be $78,000. The look is slightly different with that other brick. We don't recommend it's necessary to take that alternate brick. Alternate six, we ended up scrapping actually as part of the bid. Alternate seven is to install a divider curtain in the gym. This also applies to the electrician to provide power to it. We think it allows some more flexibility with the use of the gym if you want to split the space up into two. General contractor has an add cost of $10,000, and the electrician has an add cost of $500 to provide that curtain. We think that's money well spent in order to provide some flexibility for that gym space.
What did you say six was again?
Six? There was no alternate six. We had one at one point. We decided to.
What was it at one?
Oh, boy. I think.
Going from manufactured casework to a custom miller.
See, he doesn't just make parts.
Yeah, good job.
So also in the gym, we had an alternate cost. We've got a main court, obviously longways. We have two cross courts. The main court has glass backboards. The cross court, we thought, hey, you know, again, for any cost savings, is there an alternate for a backboard type? And we found that there is, but there's only a nominal credit of $1,000 to go with the fan-shaped backboard on the right instead of the nice glass one. So we're going to take that alternate. Okay. Alternates nine and 10 deal with some of the finishes and features in the corridors. In the base bid, we have storage cabinets that are recessed in the corridor. Walking through some other schools in the district, this is a feature that I know Shawnee at a minimum has and provides valuable space for book storage and for other types of classroom storage in the hallways. So again, as part of a cost savings measure, we wanted to see if we were to eliminate those storage cabinets, what would the credit be? It turns out that there would be a credit of $24,000. I know that the administration feels strongly that that space is valuable, and for that amount of money, do not recommend deleting those storage cabinets in the hallways.
Josh, you just have one question. Back to the past. Are they all fight?
Yes, they are.
Yeah, it's all right. Thank you.
Yeah, you can dump 10 if you want.
They don't have luck.
Okay. And alternate on 10 is, if you remember from the finishes book that Allois had prepared, that big 11-by-17 book, we had talked about the millwork features that basically looked like a tree. Again, the look of the quarter, what Randy and Joe are accomplishing here is essentially the look of walking down a city street. So the floor pattern, the way that the doors are coupled together, kind of mimic a city block and walking up to a house. Very nice architectural millwork in these quarters mimicking a tree. We, again, for cost savings, wanted to see what it would be if we were to eliminate that. This happens in every quarter in a three-story classroom wing. So what would happen in lieu of that nice millwork is it would just be the tile wing coating would continue in those spaces. So you can see the effect that it would have if we would continue the adjacent finishes. So there is a credit to do that. It is nice millwork. It does provide a nice architectural feature. There's a credit of $208,000 to delete that. Again, considering where the bids came in and where the budget was, we think it would be nice to keep that architectural millwork in place.
Any questions on that?
Looks better. Looks much nicer. Yeah, so much nicer.
Another one is awful.
He's a character.
Yeah, I like that.
Intentionalize.
Yeah.
Yeah. I.
Terrific.
It's old town over 15 years.
Yeah.
Yeah. It looks like it does.
Okay. The next alternate has to do with excavation. It affects the general contractor and also the electrical contractor. The electrical contractor will have some work related to trenching for the new service coming from the netted pole into the building. So under the base bid, the excavation is considered classified. What that means is if rock is encountered, if soil conditions are encountered beneath the surface, the district, the owner, would be on the hook for paying for that remediation. So we have unit prices on the bid form for rock excavation, rock removal. If the contractors do hit rock, the district will be paying to essentially take it out and get rid of it. An unclassified excavation, the contractor is on the hook. Whatever they hit, from a rock perspective, it's theirs to take care of. So basically, it's, you know, a bit of almost like an insurance policy. This case, the general contractor cost would be $100,000 to go from classified to unclassified. We think, given the extended site work on this project, it's probably something you should consider. We would recommend taking that alternate. As it relates to rock excavation, those costs can really creep up pretty quickly if you're paying for each cubic yard that's coming out of the ground.
I think the question has to be, because again, as they put these bids together and come back with the final number next week, it's not changing at that time. It's giving the direction tonight of where we think we should be. So everybody in agreement that we go with changing to the unclassified for $100,000?
What happens if they find a sinkhole?
Sinkholes would not be included here. So if there's something that needs to be remediated from a sinkhole perspective, filled in with concrete, grounded, et cetera, that's not included under an unclassified excavation. It's basically as you're excavating down and you hit a structure, something that needs to come out, that's what this is good for.
Okay. Everybody's fine with going to the unclassified?
Yeah. So for the GC, again, it's $100,000. The EC also had an add of $28,000. Now, given the much lesser extent of their site work, this was one where we thought maybe the district might want to consider foregoing it for the electrical contractor because it's basically a trench from point A to point B. It's not as likely that they won't hit rock in that situation. If they do, you know, you pay for it, but again, it's kind of weighing insurance. Is it $28,000 now, and maybe we come out better? Or maybe they don't hit anything, and you come out ahead. So it's something to consider, but we're not recommending that you jump into it and just accept it for the electrician.
Well, I assume if they put in the alternate bid of $28,000, that would be the worst case that they felt they would have to deal with, correct?
Potentially. I mean, it's, you know. They're kind of rolling the dice as well on their bid form.
Does everybody find the pass on the $28,000?
Yep.
Okay. Again, because next week, when it comes in with the numbers, we're not going to be going through this line by line for certain. It'll come down to one number, be voted on. Right, Josh? You're coming in with one number next week which will include all these.
We will. In fact, we do have a summary tonight with the recommended numbers. So if that does change, we'll update. All right. Now we come to the fence. Joe? All right. So what we ended up doing is, after the last meeting, all kind of ideas discussed as far as, is it an add, is it a deduct? What do we do? So the one, the first thing that we'd settled on is it will be a six-foot fence around the So, the first thing that we'd settled on is it will be a six-foot fence around the front property. Included in the base bid, there are fences at the kindergarten area and also, you can't see it, but there's a courtyard back here. Those fences are included in the base bid. They are ornamental. The base bid did not have any fencing around the front of the building. So there were two alternates. One was a six-foot ornamental fence and one was a six-foot chain link fence. So they're both add alternates. The first option is, the six-foot chain, I'm sorry. First option is a six-foot ornamental fence at the front. That would be an add of $116,000. To add a chain link fence would be $53,000. So essentially, half the cost for chain link. The recommendation would be to maintain an ornamental fence for that cost of $116,000. We also talked about, well, can we just defer that decision maybe to later in construction? Based on where the price of metals is going right now, steel and aluminum, who knows where that price is going to be in a couple of years? So, we would recommend accepting the alternate at this point. And again, we would recommend going to the ornamental option for $116,000.
And the ornamental shouldn't need a lot of big bricks on that right? How many feet is between the uprights? What is the span between the support boards?
There are, Josh.
Eight feet.
That sounds right to me.
Span, span, says eight feet.
I can see far, I can't see close.
So they're just some kind of straight post or whatever? They're not big?
Yes, just a square.
They're not stone blocks?
And as we talked also, as we talked last time, that will be closed before you get to that nice pedestrian walkway. So that fence will not extend to the front of the building.
I think that looks good. Yeah, but it's a lot.
We had talked about brick pillars or adjusting it to meet up with these.
There is going to be pillars there.
There's going to be lighting or something?
Yes, I'm sorry.
There are pillars there, he said last night.
Where?
The top.
Right at the entrance to the air.
Okay. Should be approximately 20 feet off of the flag, the flag. So you walk down a few steps and then...
It's just a two-foot one, or the two.
Oh, nice.
It's just two right there, right?
Yes.
At the gate, at the...
Yeah, the gate.
But the rest of it is just posts?
Correct.
Josh, how wide is the steps coming down to where the gate is installed?
Two foot.
Do you know, Joe?
The width of the steps.
Yeah.
The width of the steps?
That's the recess space.
Yeah, that's the recess space and you got a lot of elementary kids coming out at one time.
It's enough for eight, it's about eight feet, maybe more wide.
Does it have to be steps, it can't be a ramp, slope to get? I'm concerned about that being the recess yard and your steps are required to get down.
The accessible path is if you turn to the right there and you would come down the angled path and then you could come across the lawn.
In a wheelchair, well, I guess.
Yes. The grading is such that it's a flat area at the line of the fence.
There's also a, there's also a paved walkway that will go from the sidewalk through a gate onto the hard playground area. So it will be accessible. Same with the kindergarten area, there will be an accessible route to that playground.
What about coming out of the building?
Right here.
Is there steps coming out of the building?
Yeah, well, there are a couple of steps right there.
Yeah, that's what I was asking.
That's what she's asking.
That's why I was asking why that is.
I think it's more than it might be, definitely more. We have a railing down the middle and then two railings on the side. So I think there's either four or five feet, I can't quite recall.
So if they don't want to go through the steps, they would then take the two angles and there's, what, a gate at the end of those angles to get in?
You would come back to the same.
Oh, you'd still walk back over that?
Oh, I'm sorry. While we're on this image, alternate 13 is to provide sod around the new building in place of seed. So, these areas that are marked out here with a star, those are included. So, basically, when you open doors on day one, you don't have, you know, house soil out there waiting to germinate. It's going to be green right away. So, that is an add of $20,000, which again, we would recommend in order to finish, you know, finish it off around the building, make it clean, make it presentable from day one. All right, alternate 14.
Excuse me.
Yes.
Josh, could you go back to, I'm sorry, could you go back to the... Don't, don't want to do this. I don't want to do this. If you're in that playground, the entrance and the exit is where that red dot is, correct?
Yes.
Are we all comfortable with that being a solid fence all the way around the rest of the way? Should, would there be any need for us to have an additional opening, a gate somewhere?
There's one additional gate at the hardcore area.
Where that dark area is, right there?
There's a, I know, okay. Just wondering that, you know, if you had a number of classes outside and for some reason, everybody needed to get off that playground quickly, would there be enough exits out there that they could get it off of there?
Because I asked, is it widened for an emergency vehicle to get in there? Be big? No. Nothing, as long as they can just get it stretched or something, correct?
Also, Josh, I get to, is there a way we can see that whole area right there in a larger picture than...
Yeah.
I don't, we don't have to do it. I think we should just, we look at that whole ramp thing, it's not set in... I mean, I'm just saying, we're guessing and we're saying, okay, okay, but we haven't seen.
From what you're respective, Billy, are you looking for?
I just want to see like close up where that gate's going to be, where the steps are going to be.
Was it called the flagpole courtyard?
Pole's going to be.
That's right.
Plaza de Justin. You're going to have a whole bunch of little kids doing that now? A wheelchair going down and around the sod?
I'm seeing that, but if you have a wheelchair, you're going to be in a rag.
They keep telling me now or never, so I can't.
Billy, we're going to see if, now rendering it, we looked at it at the last meeting, provides enough information. I don't think that it will, but we'll take a look and bring it back to you.
Sorry.
No, they're working on it here.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, we can go back to it, Billy.
Okay. All right, also, bollards. So, the two entrance driveways, the bus drop-off and the parent drop-off on either side of the building, they will be lined partially with bollards in order to, you know, prevent a vehicle from jumping the curb and onto the sidewalk. Alloy has a very, very nice architectural bollard on the left. That's the base bid bollard. And that's actually removable. So, it is quite heavy, but that would be a removable bollard. There's also a base bid bollard, which is basically a standard steel pipe that's filled with concrete and gets painted. Not quite as attractive as the one on the left. So, anyway, the alternate bollard would be a savings of $7,000. We don't think that's something that you guys should, you know, consider. We think it's a nice, nice look on the left as part of the base bid. All right, and the final alternate for the GC, number 19, is related to demolition of the existing building. So, obviously, the whole building is going to be coming down. There was an alternate to let the foundation and structure of that building, anything that is below three feet, below finished grade, the final grade, to leave it in place. Instead of, you know, chasing concrete footings and getting rid of every last piece of concrete, anything that's buried below a point where it's not going to be an issue, to just leave it in place. So, there's a savings of $30,000 to do that and we would recommend accepting that savings of $30,000.
Going to unload it? Is that what we're going to do?
Sorry.
Are we going to unload the school? The dynamite, they can press a button and have it come down?
I'm not sure if the city would be.
They're going to sell tickets?
Yeah.
Never, my bad.
Yeah.
Yes, that's a $30,000 credit savings.
To keep it.
To blow it up?
No, to keep it.
Keen, and nobody's blowing it out.
Bob, you want to give a hint of $30,000? Yeah. I mean, do we want to let it in or do we, for $30,000, do you want to let under the ground what's there or do you want it there?
Yeah, I guess I just wonder what all is under there and are there consequences in the future to leaving it there? Like a big old sewer line that we want to get rid of or...
Well, it may need to be foundations and all, but really what you're doing is shifting the issue to suddenly 40 years from now when they want to build a new school there.
You don't worry. Well, I won't be here.
So, Billy, I don't know if this is going to help.
Let it under the ground?
Yeah. Solid, it's at, maybe there.
I mean, if you got to dig more than...
I'd like to get rid of it myself. I might be unloaded on that, but I'd say get rid of it.
If you got to dig more than three or four feet, then you're digging for a reason. You shouldn't be digging. The only thing I think about is we talked about other issues over there and we're not eliminating those issues.
Right, that's, I agree.
Yeah, I mean, is there an environmental risk?
No, I mean, if, you know, God forbid, there is any contaminated soil, et cetera, that will have to be remedied. This is strictly for structural components of the building.
Well, Josh, I mean, we talked about unused or abandoned sewer lines through there and things like that, right?
Those types of things are still going to be taken out. This, that would be taken out? Yes, this alternate is for concrete, especially concrete structures, caissons, you know, there are...
Like the frame part of the building, kind of?
Foundations.
Foundation, the frame, but, okay.
How much of that existing building is going to stay on the ground? I'm looking at it and I'm looking at your grade and I think maybe a little bit of the library? How much more foundations are we letting under the ground? Also, it's going to get covered. How much are you taking out?
Well, that's the whole point. It, you know, with the grading, a lot of it will be below three feet anyway, so...
What I'm saying though, how much of the original concrete foundation of Cheston has to be removed? About the whole building?
Right.
So it's like, only portions of the yellow area.
But we just talked through the... Some of the foundations could be four or five feet deep. We had these more types and all that, so anything ten feet below the final grade, you can dig out. And there was a lot of the way, you know, and... If you're never going to go on that site again, you don't care. But if someone's ever going to go on that site again, there's improvements.
We'll leave it there for future archaeologists.
That's what I said.
You got to leave somebody something.
As long as the sewer type's coming out.
I mean, you know, I can maybe... We could all go down there and drill our initials in, for a year and...
I think this picture's going to work for what we need.
Okay, so the, there are five steps coming down to a 10-foot wide sidewalk. With a 10-foot wide gate. I don't have an image, sorry, of the other gate.
So, let me just say again, so where, if somebody's handicapped, right, and they're going to come down to one side and they're going to come, they have to cut across the sod to get to this walkway?
No, no, there's on the left here.
So, this walkway over here, it goes down to the...
The other side? Says ADA accessible route on the other side?
Yeah, it says right there.
Here's the flagpole.
What did you say?
Is that accessible?
Touch screen, touch screen wall.
So the continuation of that sidewalk, you know, kind of comes in here.
Oh, that's, okay, I see.
And then opens up to a gate.
Oh, okay.
This would be the accessible route for somebody in a wheelchair to get to the hard playground area at least.
I guess it's gate.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
As you go back to that other picture though, like it happens.
You're going to come out that way.
Josh, can you go back to there?
There would be steps from the exit down to that side.
Is there any way that you could have had a ramp almost that came around so you'd avoid the steps totally?
There could be a switchback ramp. We'd have to check the grading to make sure that it would be within accessible guidelines. There might have to be like a switchback ramp.
And you'd be looking at about 30 feet.
Again, maybe it doesn't have to be ADA because you're going to go in the grass. And I'm thinking of the students that are coming out and not just going up and down all those steps all the time. Because if there's any pushing, shoving, you know, you fall on them. Yeah, I'm just talking normal students, simple ramp.
I think if we put a ramp, it would require it to be accessible.
Students pushing, shoving on ramps too.
Again, you know, that's, if you come off to the right side, there's, where it says ADA accessible route, that is just the grading does such that it's flat. No, I understand that.
Are we not asking individuals who have the hardest, or who have access issues to walk quite a distance there? Or to push quite a distance to access the playground? I mean, the individuals who have the hardest time or being in that design are, they've got to go farther away to get to the playground. Is that, is that accurate?
Unless we relocate the hardscaping closer to the building, I'm not sure how to get around that issue.
Is the hardscaping area, I mean, is that where there's going to be play equipment?
Yeah, there's actually an existing playground right next to it that will be salvaged and that was kind of the point of putting the hardscaping next to it. You know, again, it could be relocated if that would be the preference, but I think it's nice to have that open read space right in front of the building.
If it's inside the fence, just thinking, you know, where you come down the walkway there that you have? Trying to get back to that. Where, you know, where you come down the walkway there on the inside of them looking at it, right? You come down to that corner frame and if a gate was right there to go into the hardscape area with the soft area right off of it. Then, and if you have the gate there, then that, instead of the students coming out and going through the flag area, then everybody could walk that same direction.
Well, we're still kind of limited with where the existing playground and hardscaping is. I mean, again, we can...
That's what I'm talking, if you move things wherever, but...
Because you're working with what's already in place.
Well, is the hard area is there right now too?
Yes.
Or are you moving it?
It's there.
You're not moving either one then?
Correct.
It's there and it's currently used by Cheston students for their recess time or it just happens to be... What is this equipment that's there?
Existing playground, you only buy it to Cheston students because it's already fenced in.
It's fenced in.
Sounds like they want to consider ramp. Is that what you guys want, a ramp coming off the front?
Well, I do think that that would help those of us who see those steps as perhaps difficult for little ones. The ramp would hopefully make that traveling a little easier. The ramp would hopefully make that traveling a little easier. But also, I don't know if it could be made or constructed in such a way that any, everyone who wants to have a playground can enter there. But it's probably not.
Now, Josh, they are in the building, this, this building is faulty story, right?
Right.
So the steps going up, steps coming down, you know, in the building itself, too.
Oh, sure, sure, yeah. But when, when kids travel within a building, I think there's greater control over that, that movement and how they move on the outside, when they're heading outside, heading inside. There's, yeah.
It's going to run it down, you know.
A bolt?
I mean, I know we have one instance on this side here. Is there another way, because we have a walkway that comes along, is there another way to do another entrance right there?
Yeah, we, we can very simply add another gate somewhere. Because that's a, you know, that's essentially a ramp before you're right.
Right there.
Yeah. Put a gate right there.
Do that again?
Do that again.
Do that again.
Well, really, on your side.
On your side.
It's a gate there.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
That's it.
All right, so we can plan on just relocating a gate or adding a gate to where it was planned.
Does it pay that, does it just pay, you know, change the way that the flag pole thing is there or get rid of the steps totally?
So what you're saying, you're spending-
I don't know, I think that could be a, that could be a really interesting and important spot there, you know, as, you know, a landmark there around the building, the flag pole and a lot of-
I'm not getting rid of that, John, no, no. I'm letting the flag pole there, but instead of putting the steps down on the back, you square it off, right? And you have grass between there and the fence, and you go into the gates on the other side.
You never enter the gate from the center.
Correct.
They're saying delete this here altogether, and add there and there.
Right.
Done, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, then the students can separate, and you won't have a big bottleneck, too. They could go either way. This class goes that way, this class goes this way.
And now you have three entrance and exit areas.
Yeah.
Does that strike anybody regarding controlling kids that you've got them going out with two? Rather than one, you're-
Right, because you also have a flow, like if you've got back-to-back recess, will you enter on one side, exit on the other, so. Now, Ben, I sort of like seeing the middle. I just, well, I mean, I think you add the instances here, right? Yeah. Eliminating some of these, so you're going to have a gate.
Well, you keep it in the sidewalk, two entrances, two exits. All right. Yeah, that's better. Just add the two entrances.
Just add the two.
Keep the middle the way it is.
Josh, you hear that consensus?
Add the two entrances, keep the middle the way it is.
Okay, so gates, gates at either-
The walkways, yeah. Yeah. Add that down.
Gates, yeah.
Eliminating the middle one or keep going?
No, keep the middle.
Keep the middle.
Adding gate gates.
Teachers can also go through those other gates, and they're in there before the kids get in there, that's, you know.
Yeah, I can tell. That sounds reasonable.
There you go.
Easy enough.
All righty, all right.
Is this closed against discussion? Is it possible?
Close it before it reopens.
All right, moving on.
All right, moving on. Okay, so that was it for the GC. The other guys just have a couple alternates. I want to hit on the mechanical contractor. Again, the, the control system, the base bid is Siemens. Alternate for Johnson Controls, that would be an add alternate, so we do not recommend including that. Siemens is the control vendor for most of the district, most of the buildings in the district already. Mechanical contractor also had two equipment-type alternates, two manufacturer alternates. Base bin equipment is Trane. Again, Trane equipment is installed in many buildings in the district. There was an alternate for carrier equipment and an alternate for Johnson Controls equipment, both of which were add alternates, so we do not recommend accepting those alternates. There were no alternates under the plumbing contract, so we don't have to talk about them. Electrical contractor, we talked about the power requirements already for the divider curtain, so we recommend taking that, five hundred dollars. Number ten for the EC was tied to the forest paneling, the tree paneling. There's very nice accent lighting tied in with those, those tree features, so even though there'd be a savings of those lights, we, you know, don't recommend taking the deletion of those. Again, EC alternate for unclassified excavation, twenty-eight thousand, and did I, was there consensus on that? Were we going to accept it for the EC?
Correct.
Okay. And finally, for the EC, the base bid allows for a fire alarm system by any number of vendors throughout the district. Simplex is the vendor. There would be an eighty-one hundred dollar add to stick with a Simplex-only system. I think from a future maintenance and troubleshooting standpoint, it's worth accepting that eighty-one hundred dollar add to, you know, continue the continuity of Simplex throughout the district. DAC again is the environmental abatement contractor. There was one alternate for those guys. We didn't want to pull any of the existing chalkboards off the wall. There's a potential that the glue that holds those on contains asbestos. So what we did is we identified an alternate price, which we will accept at this point to remove the glue behind those marking boards. Once the students are out, we can pull them off and actually have it tested. If it comes back negative for asbestos, we will then credit back that twenty-six thousand dollars out of their contract. So at this point, we should accept the alternate and potentially deduct that amount at a later point. Okay? So in summary, the recommended alternates again for the GC would be for a thirty-year roof, the divider curtain, unclassified excavation, this six-foot ornamental fence, the sod, and the, to abandon the concrete structures of the existing building below three feet. For the EC, it's the power for the divider curtain, and it's the Simplex fire alarm system. Abatement contractor is for the chalkboard glue. So updated bid costs with the recommended alternates are shown there. Even with the accepted alternates, we're still about eight-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars below the budgeted amount. Any questions on Cheston?
Josh, as you're doing those numbers and everything, right, could you add on just to the bottom there, all the others, in other words, the ten percent margin and all that? Because that's really all the total numbers that we talked about for Cheston there.
Right, so this, this is hard cost, construction costs only.
Right.
We will update the total budget with the soft cost numbers that, to the extent that we can at this point.
Right, yeah, just to keep that budget number there.
So we can see where we're moving against there. Okay, all right, if no other Cheston comments, we can jump to the stadium discussions.
Before you do that, I just want to say, I want to compliment, first of all, the whole team, but especially the team, the design team here, the effort put forth, because I'm telling you right now, the construction marketing out there, everybody's not getting the results you saw, so I think you should definitely recognize yourself and the team for the effort for them, your timing and everything you did. I think the schedule that we have out there, the phasing plan and the setup, I think contributed to the positive results you see, so I think you ought to compliment yourself for that and not just walk away quick, but you don't get a lot of compliments from them.
Great job.
Good.
Good job.
Tracy, you saw. When's that round breaking ceremony?
All right, so jumping now to the stadium discussion. Last time, we had presented, again, preliminary sketch plans, very rough sketch plans, and budget updates. At the last committee meeting, there were some comments related to pen dot costs at the high school, for example, and some other items that were questioned as far as, well, we have to do this anyway, and maybe we should include that under the cost for one option or another. So tonight, we do have an updated listing of costs. This first one would be for Cottingham. What I do want to highlight, just from the last update, items that were adjusted or added. We added a line item for both sites for ENS controls, erosion and sedimentation, related to the conservation district process. We added a line item of a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars for those controls. Again, that would be to both sites. Under Cottingham, we, we added the cost for turf replacement at the high school to resurface the track and also to install the competition lights at the existing turf field. Those are items that will be included in scope under the high school site, so I guess I'm trying to keep bin apples-to-apples comparison, at least as much as we could. Those items were added to the Cottingham budget. So what was a, you know, ten and a half, maybe, million-dollar look last meeting, now with those adjustments, is thirteen-point-eight million. We also still have options for Cottingham, so that number includes a grass surface, plain surface, and it includes the renovation of the fieldhouse, not a new fieldhouse. Under the replacement options, we identified the net increase for the addition or the installation of a synthetic turf surface. That would be a net increase of about one-point-one million. A new fieldhouse, if the existing root fieldhouse were to be demolished and rebuilt. That's, that's a tough one, because the bottom portion of that building is, is basically buried below grade on the field side, so it's kind of tough to just assign a square-foot cost to that building because of the pretty extensive site work related to it. We did try to assign a cost of about four-hundred dollars a square foot, including demolition and site work, so that would be a, a net premium cost of just over two million dollars to rebuild the fieldhouse instead of renovating what's there currently. We also talked about the reconstruction of the parking lot, moving the basketball courts from the current corner over to Vanderveer Park, and that could be an additional cost of over a million dollars there as well. So those were listed as optional costs under the Cottingham scenario. At the high school, again, some adjustments were made there with the addition of the ENS controls, again, at a hundred-and-fifty thousand. The ten-dot improvements, you know, based on the discussion and the feedback, we bumped that up from a million to one-point-five million for the high school. Had a line item, also, we included the synthetic turf and the resurfacing of the track, so those two items are duplicated between the two, between Cottingham and the high school. There's a line item right now that's a question mark as far as what do you do with Cottingham if the stadium were to be at the high school? You know, it's tough to put a number or determination with that right now, but it is important to know that there will be a dollar amount at some point filled in there. Something has to happen with Cottingham, so until that is determined, that's a question mark at this point. So that total updated cost now is eighteen-point-four million dollars for the high school site. Also, some comments. We started talking about some seating options. Right now, with the seating capacity of about four thousand on the home side and about fifteen hundred on the visitor's side, we understand those numbers probably want to get bumped up, at least on the visitor's side, based on some feedback that Mr. Kripzak had tonight, maybe up to around eighteen hundred or so. Those seating numbers were based initially on an eighteen-inch seating width, which is a standard seating width for a stadium. A question came up, well, what if we provided a wider seating surface, maybe twenty, twenty-two inches? So what we're looking at, we already have the bleachers pretty much extended from end zone to end zone, so we can't really move east to west. This would apply to either site, so we have to add rows accordingly to make up that room. So this is just a breakdown. If you were to increase from eighteen to a twenty-inch or a twenty-two-inch seat, how many seats per row you could get on the home side? With an eighteen-inch seat, you can get about a hundred-and-ninety-six seats. While going up to a twenty-two-inch wide seat, you can only get about a hundred-and-sixty seats, okay? So you go from twenty up to twenty-five rows on the home side. What's important to note, though, is from a building code perspective, they don't care if you have twenty, twenty-two-inch seats. It's based, the count is based on the standard eighteen-inch width. So even though you're looking at a planned capacity, you know, hovering around four thousand on the home side, from a code perspective, you're actually planning for a capacity of four-thousand-nine hundred. And what the impact of that would be is related to toilet fixtures. So you have to have so many toilet fixtures per number of seats. So, you know, the costs for additional bathroom facilities are not included here, but we did just want to show you what the increase in cost would be from a structure perspective of that bleacher assembly. So eighteen-inch wide seats, we had prepared a budget of about one-point-six million. To go to twenty-inch seats would take you up about two-hundred-and-ten thousand to one-point-eight-six million. And for twenty-two-inch wide seats, increase of about three-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand up to just over two million dollars, so.
And if I understood you correctly, by going, you've got to plan for additional bathroom facilities.
By creating more seating area. Yeah, whether it's wider, taller, whatever it might be, you still need to plan for some more bathroom facilities.
Now, on the stadiums, Josh, a lot of the stadiums that we've done, though, the, the code official will let you seek a variance, sometimes for the total number of seats, because I would say eighty percent of the time, you're not filling the stadium up with that. So they recognize that as the impact of that. Sometimes, like, I know, for example, like the Bethlehem Area School District Stadium, the City of Bethlehem, we got a significant variance because they're half the place would be full of bathrooms. If you had to do it based on their, because they have a seating capacity of twelve thousand. So it is, so Josh is absolutely right. It's something we have to worry about. That's why we can't put a number on it, but it's something, if you go that route, between the variance and what you might have to adjust, maybe an adjustment, but hopefully not a big one.
So some other points to keep in mind, you know, if we do go taller, or which would be wider essentially, if you're looking from overhead, what would the impact be on the parking lot on the home side or to the church street, you know, alley on the visitor's side? So there are constraints that would have to be accounted for. And, you know, there are options out there as far as seating surfaces, plastic versus the aluminum bench, molded seating modules. Some areas of seating can be wider, there can be, you know, a section of wider seating, a section of deeper seating if we need to accommodate, you know, instruments or bigger types of things. So there, there are options out there, but we just wanted to, again, give you sort of a, a quick and dirty look at what some of the premium costs might be to go a little wider.
So do you think twenty inches of, is a, because, I mean, we know eighteen's going to work, but do you think twenty is a good alternative? Not going to the twenty-two? I mean, does that still keep us a couple inches larger without going completely over to top? Twenty-two seems like it's going to be, that's not an option, it seems like it.
Actually, Billy, some of the people that come into our stadium that carry their seats in, they're twenty-one-inch seats. So, you know, that would be-
Oh, so we're going to be a little bit over on that, I guess.
Right, and, and when they're sitting in the reserved section areas and everything, right? If you're measuring out and we're numbering those seats, we've got to think about how we're numbering, which comes back to what Josh is saying, maybe in different areas, you know, maybe there's another number of seats in the general admission areas, but in the reserved areas, you have to think about what the seating size should be and let it vary accordingly.
So mixing, you're mixing.
I'm talking mixing it, yeah.
Without, without hitting those twenty-two-inch total numbers there.
Right, which they need to go back and say, okay, in the general admission, it's eighteen inches, but if somebody actually takes twenty or twenty-four, okay?
Right, right, right.
You know, maybe that'll take up that capacity that we talked for empty seats or whatever.
These are eighteen-inch, uh, DCs here?
They are?
Yeah, absolutely, eighteen-inch, you're just going to-
That's eighteen-inch.
But the problem is, it's not, it's not the seat. It's usually, what happens is, it's right here.
Yeah.
And when you're wearing the big coats and all, right? And you get the people with the things in the back- And you get the people with the things in the back, and then they got it stuffed here. And that's what the problem is. It's not so much, I don't think it's so much defined.
Is there a way? We have an average of about 1,000 season tickets. That's pretty comprehensive. We'll hit 1,200 season tickets sold at the extra cost a little bit. And for the 100 East and P-Burg game, we sold off 1,522, whatever that number was back then, in our reserved areas. So is there a way to maybe look at where our aisles are and our sections? And maybe in 1,200, 1,400, whatever that number ends up being, maybe those are the 20 or 22s, as you said? And then the other sections go with the 18s?
Because student section certainly don't have 22.
Where the band would might be. But if you gauge, I don't think we'll ever go over much of 1,200 season tickets at this point. There's no reason that we're going to all of a sudden jump to 1,500 or 2,000 season ticket holders. I don't see that happening. But you have to see how the sections are drawn out with the steps.
Yeah, that's the idea. We have to wait and see and then we can really pick and choose, yes.
So that's why, looking at this, this was about the end, but the next key was if everybody left Georgia, they could make it or couldn't make it this Saturday. Looking at some of these other types of things, not just the seating, but as we were just going through here, talking about the locker rooms and everything, what do they have? Then they can talk about what would, because this helps to make a decision quick. These are all the decisions that have to be made. What happens with root fieldhouse? Refurb, will it get us what we want? How will they get the things, like we say, we would like to see in that fieldhouse and all? Or does it have, something else have to be done there? So that's part of the look and see on a Saturday and seeing different variations that places have done and everything. We get those ideas, we keep feeding. So a thought with this is, as we look at the next, I know what I said at the last meeting, but I know with both Josh and Arif, we talked about by this June slash July at the latest, I don't want to go there, but that is the latest, that they can then start to design. But by then, they have all the answers for all the location wise, the seating issues talked about resolved, the locker room issues resolved and everything. So then they're going to go away to come back, just like they did with the school, like with the school, Cheston and everything else, and start to, really start to nail that down. Even simple decisions as far as the parking lot, like on Vandevere, do we do the lot? Don't we do the lot? But that also gets determined too by, okay, how much do we have to go higher because what's possibly the impact back there? And so what I'm thinking is, we have Saturday, we have, next month, we have the committee meeting, and we schedule another one of these meetings, which should, at that point, Josh, I don't think we should have a lot of other things to talk about except the stadium. And we can focus that whole evening on hopefully anything and everything. If people have questions, please send them to George and myself, so that we can get them over to Arif and them, and that we are looking at some of these things as we go out and look, and that we can report back of what did we see in all these various areas? Because, as I said the last time, this is, you get to build this, and this would be something that's going to last 75 to 100 years. Other decisions to make that were up here on the board, okay? Had to do, we heard about the lighting at the high school to put it around the track and everything for the events. We heard about where the girl teams were playing over at the middle school, and should they be moved to the high school? Why were they there? We did here, and it's not up here. I missed it. And that was the issue about, should there be bathrooms at the high school installed between the fields, where the softball fields are and everything else, as compared to using the porta potts? So that's another add one currently that goes up there as you're looking at the cost. Because I think when we approve this, we're approving what happens to all the athletes. We're not nickel on diving it, because, oh yeah, we can make this choice. And then a year later, for now, say, okay, we're going to do this. Well, when you look at all those costs, those are the total costs of the decision we are actually making. And so that's why trying to understand this. And then the other thing is talking about, okay, we're going to go with the metal bleachers or what kind are you going with? He just mentioned the depth of them. Or do we look at something which never came out? Do you look at something a little bit different for the band area and everything? A lot of different thoughts. So that's currently a rough timetable, again, keeping to look at it, but we cannot, cannot go, I'd like to say past June at the latest, but I'm hoping we can wrap it up in May by having those two meetings discussing this. And then we, and May 22nd or whatever, we vote on it.
Arif, that's a doable timetable, you think?
That's what we had confirmed. Now, the big, I think the variable that I'll add to that is if it's at the high school, the selection of the high school, I think the approval process through the outside agencies could be a little more challenging.
Yeah, they don't want, yeah. Well, but...
Yeah, from a timestamp point of view.
Does the school just own Vandevere, that's like the city, that's the district?
So questions on what you just saw with all the various options that have been added and once the updated, I mean, that's something that we asked Josh to do at the last meeting, to go back and sharpen the pencil and everything, and come back and looking at all these pieces.
Well, I think we should mix the seating sizes for sure. So that's, you know, something we...
And using what Jim was talking about.
On the visitor's side, we don't sell reserve tickets on the visitor's side.
So they could be 18.
Why would it be 16?
14 and 1/2 sold.
Jim, just confirming, we don't really have to number any of the general or the open seating, right? Visitor side or anything?
I don't know what the cost savings would be of not numbering, just in case you did have a year that wanted to sell those extras or a demand. It might be, they might be smaller seats if that's the case in those other areas, but it would limit you. I don't know what the cost is to put numbers on them that might be minimal.
It's not the cost savings, it's about the size. And it's about the people that, if all of a sudden you number them, right? And then you number them at 18 inches, and somebody says 30, 22 inch seats, or 21 inch seats, or 20 inch seats, that's just throwing everything off.
I think 1,200 to 1,500 of the larger seats, a fact will give side to go with. We're never going to go over those with season ticket sales. The one year we did was for the 100 East and P-Burg game 11 years ago, because everybody wanted Thanksgiving tickets.
And Jim, not trying to resolve it here, okay? But just thoughts out there. Maybe we end up numbering some of the lower areas and letting the upper areas unnumbered? Those types of concepts could work?
Yeah, that's what we can sit and, you know...
As I said, not resolving it here, but just thoughts like that can be talked about. Okay.
Josh, I have a question. I know there's some fly language of rumors and confusion. I see, I saw this the other day, I'm still a little confused. Can you explain the change in the waters so drastic on both of them?
I've got to look at your things. I couldn't see this.
From, it was 10.8 to 13.8, and then possibly down to 19.2 for Cottingham. So I just, I think I need, I think we need to clarify.
Cottingham, this is in...
Well, the last meeting was 10.8.
Yeah.
So I just want to make sure everybody's clear.
And then with the Adols, it was probably about 13. So now it's like 6 million more.
Just explain to everybody where, why, where or why that number changed.
So from, for both sites, again, we added a line item for erosion and sedimentation controls. That is second one down, it's up to 50,000. Okay? I don't think really anything changed until we get down... Field drainage? Yeah, so, okay, so that's right. So I'm sorry, there was field...
Draining and draining.
Field drainage structures, okay? That was increased by $50,000. That was at 150,000, now it's at 200,000.
But the biggest ones that will change is getting their rear simply is things as they, on the last sheet, if we didn't add the numbers in, and that was, if we, for at Cottingham, you have to also add in redoing the track and the current field at the high school. And the other one was adding the additional field at the high school, which moved the middle school student, not the middle school student, which moved the programs that were done at the middle school back to the high school. Those were, and putting the lighting on, because there was no light. Those are the bigger ticket items that were added into here, which on the last sheet, when you came down two columns, they had a little block at the bottom with numbers in, and it was a matter, I have to add it over here and I don't add it over here. And those are some of the differences.
Right. So what bothers me is these three numbers last time, it was at 10.5 or whatever, were not on there. They were included in that box at the bottom stating that regardless of the site, you have to do this. So all we did was we took those numbers and we put them in both options. So replace turf at high school, resurface track at high school, install lights at high school. So what we're saying is, that's going to happen, it sounds like, regardless of the location. Okay? So those are big ticket items right there.
But I'm, what I'm asking is, what did we add to this that we now went up so high that we surpassed the cost to build a whole brand new?
Well, there's still a, what, four and a half?
No, we're higher now.
There's still a three and a half spread.
Still 13.
10 and a half, just like... Cottingham, we talked about a gas field, right? And we talked about renovating the fieldhouse. Okay? So when you look at the difference of 13.8 to 18.4 at the high school...
18.4 is even on something, because it's like we still haven't figured out what the cost of change or whatever we're doing.
Correct.
It will be above that amount.
Oh, yeah. So, you know, I just want to clarify that there's still a almost $4 million spread between the grass option at Cottingham and the existing fieldhouse.
Which is what we were at, because it was grass, we were asking for it. And that's still that same spread.
And you weren't doing the parking lot, like, and you weren't doing the new field.
Right. So even last time, the, even last time, the synthetic turf was listed as an option, and the parking lot was listed as an option. I did add the fieldhouse. We didn't talk about that necessarily last time, but again, I just, I wanted to get it out there that if you do, you know, if there is a new fieldhouse to go on this site, it's going to be, it's going to be kind of tricky. It's a tight little corner down there, and so I just wanted to show you that, you know...
Which is why we wanted to go renovating the field.
Right, right. So again, those are...
What you've done, Josh, is you added 2.1 million with those last three there, okay? Which wasn't under the 10 point whatever before.
You still had the 10, 5 to 8.
Right. But 2.1 of that ends up being those items which weren't identified under that last one.
Right.
It aren't happening on the Cottingham site, is the title. So they're happening at the high school site, to be clear.
Correct.
So that's 2.1 million, right, that is not associated with Cottingham itself.
But George, it was to make an equal to equal comparison. Because if the stadium would be at the high school, then those things are automatically included in that pricing already. If it's down at Cottingham, you still have to spend that same money for the high school.
But it's not, the high school's going to be the 18.4, because we still have the real time, so it's really...
It's 18.4 plus.
Plus, right. The plus, that's what I'm saying. It's not 18.4 or some number.
What is, what would you, you know, when you look and you think about what the demolition is of Cheston, what do you think the demolition of Cottingham would be?
Are we taking the foundations out or not?
No.
Just a joke. Just a joke. No, we had a demo, there's a demo number there.
Do you have a, do you have a...
No.
Still better. We're in stone about the traffic and stuff. It's going to be higher than that. So we don't even have that number yet. It could be, okay.
What number is that? So the Cottingham demolition number right now is 300,000.
Well, you're, what was that?
Classify or unclassify.
87. Because all that does is take the Tina.
What number did you say we don't have?
The demolition.
I said, do we have, no, no, I didn't say anything about demolition. I said, do we ever get the numbers for the traffic patterns and that? Because I remember that being talked about as well.
I think we have to go back, understanding is, there was, and John stepped out of the room.
There's a stoplight and...
John has to go back out and reach out to Mr. Hector and tell him we want to be included in his study. He was originally doing that study. We're putting that traffic light in because my understanding or belief is, and I could be wrong on this, he has to do a traffic study right now on Greenwood Avenue, and I believe we sent a letter over there telling him we didn't want to be part of it. I think we have to, we should, no matter what we do, we ought to be part of that, just to understand what it would be and have that included.
Well, to be clear, we sent a letter because we don't want to open that up in the reconstruction of the high school.
But we could do things, you could be part of the study and not open it up. And that's what we should do.
I'd rather than you have to, I understand.
Because they'll look at that and include those numbers when he designs that intersection.
Does he want money for that?
I think he was just asking, they, it was just handed out that we could do it, I think, and that's why we should have followed. I didn't know that the letter was even sent. Well, are there other questions right now tonight? Are there other items we should consider? That, I'm real, as you go home tonight and start thinking, oh, I didn't ask, please, please, send an email.
We're going to email you.
That's fine. You know, the more informed that we can be, you saw what we went through for Cheston tonight. We got there after more than a year of talking, going through various things and everything and wrapping it up. A stadium should be nowhere near that length and wide, and it won't be that long at the time. But you want to make sure you have all the information possible for making a good decision.
My concerns are actually outside the stadium, the park, so we already talked about that. I'll say about that, but it's not, it's not really part of the conversation tonight.
No, but if there's something you'd like to know so we can do more exploration about the park, please send an email, that we can get out to everybody. Because, again, I want to come in with as much information as we can on as many topics as we can to discuss at the next meeting, because if you get it all out on the table, that we don't keep going back and saying, oh, forget this, or we ought to look at that. Let's get it all out there.
Mr. Prano, you had mentioned that you were looking at the number of fields and the scheduling of activities. And I asked Mr. Kripzak to be here tonight to, I don't know if this is a forum that you would like to talk about that, because the scheduling of the fields is one that's, I'm sure, extremely challenging. And if anybody would have any questions regarding the scheduling of all these facilities, I don't, again, I don't know if this is the right forum for it, but I knew there were questions asked about that. Because I don't believe we suffer from too many fields. I, you know, I think we, Jim has had a fair assessment of that. For a district our size and with the number of teams that we have, do we have more or fewer fields, do you think?
I think the retangler field where we struggle in the fall, especially because boys and girls soccer has technically four teams, so we scatter them along the middle school campus as we can in the fall, especially. But they're not really competition field. Some of the fields we have at the middle school are not full light fields. They're okay for recess or practices. And even one or two in the high school aren't really regulation field. The practice football field is only 90 yards long, so you can never use that for soccer or football games. And the freshman junior high football field out there, same thing. It's a field to practice on, about 70 yards, but they're not big enough for competition. And one of them is the middle school, you can't play soccer on or play football on because if you kick a ball, it's going to hit the houses right there. But we can do controlled activities there for drills and light practices to avoid problems with the neighbors.
But you know, that brings about an idea we have never talked about, is perhaps shortening the fields and making them smaller might solve some of our problems there all the way around. If we go to 80 yards, for example, we can get a couple more fields in that.
But Jim, I think something that helps at some locations, right? And even as we brought it up here, once you put lights on the fields, it gives you more use out of the fields, too.
Well, that's why to bring girls lacrosse fairly over to the high school at the existing track turf field area, it gives us more opportunity. Right now, track practices at the school with about 130, 140 kids. Boys lacrosse comes on at 4:30, because that's what it's lined for, and then it gets dark. So now girls have to stay at the middle school. There's not enough time of daylight without lights to have all three of those teams practice at that facility and play at that facility.
And that's why during our discussions and everything, when you were here, the comments about lights came up. Because I think, like, Deerfield and Allen and Central, where they share a field up there, right? It's a matter that they basically have like three different teams that share some of those fields, and with their lights and everything, that's how they get around some of those things.
Well, in the fall they do, but in the spring, some of those teams don't have Well, in the fall they do, but in the spring, some of those teams don't have lacrosse. And we do. We have boys and girls, varsity and JV. So again, really it's four teams that we have maneuver, coaches have cooperated because they enjoy coaching and playing, but we must kids around, moving around a little to make that happen.
Yeah, I'd like to see them at the high school.
I agree, and that's why I think getting the lights out there and everything's important. And so it doesn't matter where Cottingham is, one way or the other, okay? But it's important that, like, maybe if one's down there and you have lights, or when we look at these, if we can say, what, is there a possibility? Talk more about a possibility of doing something even down there that we have to look at.
I like your bathroom idea, too.
Again, that's what I'm saying, let's get it all on the table.
My grandkids are gonna be playing there Monday. I would have hit them on the knuckle after going to Portage John's, that'd be fun.
Stadium at Palmer is more limiting to us.
Well, we just had a track meet there the other day with two teams. We had a JV softball team going on. And that whole half of the campus, from Mr. Geiger's area going down the steps to the main office of the high school, from there almost all the way up to Greenwood, there almost wasn't an open parking spot. It was just for a track meet and JV softball. Like, there aren't many spots as many as people think. All in front of the high school, there are some spots to leave lots. But they're gonna walk just as far as Cottingham if they park.
You're trying to tell yesterday, right, Jim?
The fall with the number of teams playing out there would be really difficult, with field hockey, football on Mondays and Fridays, soccer on both levels. I know the turf gives us an elongated amount of time, but it's just too many teams that are really insufficiently put competition-wise, especially on Mondays and Fridays. Probably even more so Mondays than Fridays to get fresh, the JV doubleheader. We do that now, and you're not out of Cottingham till nine o'clock, so there's really no other... So field hockey be displaced, soccer be displaced.
Would our phys ed classes use the stadium field for phys ed?
Well, they currently do now without a stadium there. They currently use the turf and track right now. And we would just be replacing that current turf with new because it's about twelve years old.
Heavily, they, they use it.
Yeah, I, did somebody say seven, the number seven fifty?
That was competitions in a year, yeah.
Yes.
Anything else, John?
No. I, I just wanted to make sure that if you wanted to get any information from us on that, we, we...